Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:31 PM. First item on the agenda is pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is privilege of the floor. Anyone wanna go first?
Maybe go from left to right?
If you... Nothing in the middle? Nothing. Barbara?
Yes. You know me, I'm Barbara George, and I've come before you two times before. In January, the January meeting, the first and the second meeting. And my brother Don has his own site for Goshen, it's an information site. And so he's here just in the interest of recording because the first meeting was not recorded. And then the second meeting didn't have all of the meetings. So there was some concern about if there was any consideration at all, or if it had been brought before the public for consideration, the property that we had requested you think about, which is Anthony Dobbin's Sage Cochin property on Main Street. So that was the reason why we came, to ask again if you are considering it or not considering it, is it anything that would be presented to the public, and if not, why? I just am curious as to why it hasn't gone further than my efforts to represent my family. This is my mother's property, I wanna be clear about that. That's my mother's property, and I'm representing her. So that's my request of the board. You could explain that to me? That'd be great.
Okay, so unfinished business, we can have a discussion. Barbara George, Bob Lee. Any other privilege? No? Okay. You're on each. Next item is the approval of the minutes of January 3rd. Do you have the motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make some adjustments.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? What is the motion, Gary? Thank you. I need the motion to approve the minutes of January 10th.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, another second? Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Motion, Gary. Thank you. I just would like to retract one minute, go back to privilege of the floor. Norm Markowitz, Markowitz, I forgive me if I'm pronouncing that wrong, has called me and has mentioned that he can't see or hear this side of the table too well. Mentioned a USC microphone, I'm writing, I have this written down, 'cause I'm technologically not adept, whatever. Or something called a blue ball that you put in the middle of the table and it enunciates for us, I guess. So I'm bringing that to the board detention, David, for filming purposes. And he also just asked that we be sensitive to the buildings on the tax rules and labels when we consider our building options. Okey dokey. Thank you. Treasurer's report.
Good evening, everybody. Hey, Jack, how's it been doing? Long time no see, some of the board members here. We have the January 31st reports for the balance sheet and profit and loss statement. And, you know, I'll be brief, nothing has really changed all that much. The library charges are a little light for the month of January, 'cause the library was closed for a few days. And there was some money at the end of January that didn't get deposited until February. So we're a little under on our library charges income for the month. The salaries and wages are a little high in January as well, but that had been reported the last meeting, that the trend on that had been on just slightly over budget for the last month or so. January was a three paycheck month, that's why the salaries and wages are so high there, seventy-three thousand eight forty-two. 'Cause there's two months in the year where we have a third paycheck, 'cause there's twenty-six for the whole year. The books, we recently made a payment to, fairly substantial payment, to Baker and Taylor, and that got us caught up through most of December, but there's still some December and January bills out there that I'll be working on in the next week or so. But the same thing as last meeting, when that, when all is said and done, the books are probably right on budget, you know, give or take a few dollars. But it's not gonna end the year that dramatically under budget. They're just, Baker and Taylor is coming in at a faster pace than Audrey and I can keep up with. Nothing else, really, there's been no unusual expenses in the last month. Everything else has more or less been on cue. We made the loan payment, as of this report, the loan was down to three hundred and seventy thousand six forty-nine at the end of January. February 2nd, we made the February payment, balance is now three sixty-three eight oh eight. So we're almost at the, when we get down to three hundred, we'll be at the halfway point of the original amount. So it continues to go down. And actually, we made the payment on a snow day, but I thought to call it, to get it paid as soon as we could to save on the little interest that we paid off sooner rather than later. But technically, it's due in a tenth or something. Usually pay it on the first or the second. And we have eighty-five thousand dollars cash left in the checking account, and five hundred and thirty-five thousand in the Orange County Trust Money Market account. And I think it's in March, I can't remember if it's the beginning of the month or the end, that we get our last tax revenue check, the final ten percent, which is like another hundred and fifteen thousand. So altogether, this should be enough to make us end the year with a decent amount of money left. I was hoping to have a projection, but due to time constraints, I don't have it at this meeting, but we'll definitely have it for the next meeting, of how much we anticipate we should have left at June 30th. Right, for issues of tan and stuff. It's definitely gonna be a substantial amount, but I couldn't, you know, give more than educated guess now. But since we have over six hundred thousand here, plus another hundred and fifteen coming in, we only have five months left in the year, we'll be fine. And for the next meeting, we'll have a ballpark projection of how much we should have left at the end of the fiscal year. And the auditors, trying to read Frank's line, I spoke with them today. They had, a couple weeks ago, they came in and they got a copy of our QuickBooks, most current one. So they're ready to start doing the field work for the audit for the June 30th, 2010 year, if they get to go ahead. And they said, if we really wanted, they could have it done in six to eight weeks, from when they start.
Except that it's next time.
That's why I was surprised when I spoke to Lorelei today, when she said that, I didn't wanna give her any reasons to change her mind, but she did use the phrase "six to eight weeks", from when they come here to start their field work, to do the testing of our expenses and, you know, checking over some of our invoices. But, so...
Especially since they just did that in the last eight months, you thought they have a pretty good handle on it.
Absolutely, that's one point that she made, since they just did the audit in the last few months, if she sends her same employees here, they're familiar, so it should make it, you know, streamline it, make it a little easier. But I told her I'd relay that to the board tonight. And more or less, that's where we're at.
But Jack, that wasn't what my question was going to be, but thank you for bringing it up. I've been spending some time just checking to see what the Warwick Library does.
Right, right.
And among the things that I found out is that on rough, basically October 1st, actually it's a couple of days before that, they get their tax levy in one payment, one hundred percent.
Right, and we get it stacked.
And we get, do you know what is, why that happened?
I could inquire tomorrow, I'll call and I'll talk to our contact at the school district and see if they know why it was set up that way. But it's been that way since as far as I know. I even looked into history for that report, of going back to the last five or six years, and it's always been in three installments, fifty, forty, ten, as far as, you know, the last five or six years at least.
I mean, it's almost like they're apparent doling out our allowance.
Right, right, right.
And that's not their job, and I think, can I ask that you report back to the board on that?
Absolutely. Sure, that should be, you know, fairly easy for them to have a response, so I'll find out tomorrow or this week.
Or at least have Matt report back to the board on that question.
Sure, sure.
Whatever the right way of doing things is.
Right. But if Warwick gets all theirs in one chunk, then, you know, they're probably earning more interest in the bank than we've been able to. But I'll definitely inquire about that. Sure.
Any other questions for Jack? Do you have a motion to accept the treasurer's?
I'm sorry, I mean, were you asking the board whether we wanna go along with this audit, or...
I guess unofficially, if you're happy with Lorelei, and if she can keep to those terms, I know you want the time as of essence, so if the June 30th, oh, ten, could be done, you know, in six to eight weeks, you know, regardless of the taxes, and if that could happen, maybe I guess I am asking the board if that would be acceptable.
I thought you did.
I was just gonna say, why did this accounting firm give us the last one about eighteen months late? We got it in December, didn't we? And it was unsigned. It doesn't sound like a very professional outfit, now that suddenly they're gonna, and maybe they're aware that we're unhappy, and suddenly they're gonna start to do what they should've been doing before, for the sounds like to me. So I would like to look into other alternatives. I think Warwick got the report for the, oh, ten, the July 30th, July, June 30th.
Right.
End of fiscal year. They already have their report.
There's this done already.
Yeah. And now, this firm is beginning to discuss possibly starting ours. So I would definitely like to look at some alternatives, if we have that choice, unless, are we bound to them in any way for the next report? That would be my question.
I know we approved them. When do we do that, Carol? At what time of the year?
At the re-organizing meeting?
Yeah, yeah. So it's something between now and the re-organizational meeting that we can look into?
I thought we only approved the accountant. The accountant chose the auditor, chose the auditor. I do not believe we voted on an auditor. We voted on the accountant and the trustee.
Even if we, even if the board approved going with that individual, if Matt hasn't signed an agreement, I mean, in a sense, you're authorizing our director to go ahead and do something. But he hasn't done it yet, because there's some delinquent in what your work, then the board can go in a different direction and say to Matt, "Hold off."
Well, we clearly identified what we wanted them to do and when.
Like have a timely audit, and then maybe have a signed audit.
Well, what do we have as far as discussion of work?
Well, we have the 2009 audit, that didn't show up till December 2010 without a signature on it. That's an eighteen month delay in the audit, so now we're not sure.
And somebody said something.
And now it's February 2011, and they haven't started the audits for our books that were closed June 30th, 2010. Oh, we can do it in six to eight weeks. Why would we believe that, when it took them eighteen months to do the last one? And so then, if we, if you're right, and we don't have a signed contract, committing us to have them do this audit, maybe we should. We've already waited this amount of time. You know, if we wait another month to find someone better who can do it quickly and properly, timely. Maybe we can see Warwick's resistance. They seem to have their, it seems to be on the ball, thank you.
And just as the common sense checks and balance, we, I believe that the audit report is made to the board, it's not made to the library, it's not made to the trustee, it's not made to Jack, it's made to the board. The auditor is our employee, and I think the fact that traditionally, we have our employee as our bookkeeper, our accountant, our trustee, choosing the auditor is, tends to be, opens up the door to a conflict of interest and a lack of checks and balances.
I know she's done a presentation in the past. Lorelei has come in the firm and given us all copies and asked if there's any questions, and everything was fine. But it's not, you know, I don't know if it's because she's asked, or she just does it for her contract, but in my time, I'd say two or three times for my term that I've seen her here. So something the board can absolutely think about, consider, and look into, if we can get a better, for them to do it in a timely manner.
Have you un-signed your fourth and sign?
I did sign off on two months ago.
No, did she sign her report? Yes.
Yes.
Jack. All right, so you're gonna look into...
But she didn't sign our copy, the report to us.
Okay, we'll have to look into it.
I mean, I can show it to you if you like.
I believe it.
We'll have to figure out what the reasoning is, if they're overburdened, maybe try to reconsider.
Well, I think just the fact that it took them eighteen months to...
And the fact that the report is just dated July, and it delivers to us in December after, after constant priding, almost daily priding. Jack got tired of hearing me, and every time I called, he cringed.
Yeah, I mean, is this, is this one of those things where we're just doing business with them because the previous board's all this?
I'm thinking that might be complacency, great familiarity, and everybody just is comfortable.
And it's not acceptable. No, it's not, and it seems like it's dragging out longer and longer, so...
So now that we have it...
So why don't we make a motion or something to postpone having the audit done until next meeting, when we decide on a better, I can't, I wanna be...
Not a motion.
Oh, not a motion. Adjust the decision, I think, correct. We have to make a decision.
So we wanna make that decision?
So the next meeting will decide, and between now and then we'll have...
And in the interim, we find out if we can disconnect ourselves.
Right. Either the contract, or what it makes we have, and see what Warwick's using, see if they're overburdened, or let's sit down with them and find out what they'll give us, for how much, and, you know, in a timely manner.
You wanna wait, you wanna make the motion?
Well, she's out of the emotions, the board's just in discussion.
So we'll just wait till the next meeting to decide on this, and who should we have look into it?
Either Matt or Jack, whoever wants to do it.
Well, Frank is the one who did the research. Frank should be complimented for...
That's the name that he sent, that's Warwick's, he sent an email Friday.
One of the libraries should we talk to, I mean, instead of just, I mean, Warwick's unhappy with who they have, right? But we can't just go to one library.
Well, maybe they use the same, maybe Warwick will say...
Actually, the recommendation that we have from, I'm sorry, EM, the recommendation we have from Warwick is the same auditing firm that does our fire department and the village.
Oh, okay.
In Goshen has worked for the library.
And does it now?
And does Warwick, and a couple other libraries.
Okay, okay.
So, and it's, I gave Jack the name, I don't have it, and...
No, no, that's fine, I'm just saying...
Right, I have it on my email upstairs.
I'm just giving you the...
No, no, thank you.
The resume.
And Warwick is a school district library, so they have similar laws.
Right. Only twice as big as the...
Sorry, see, the name, Matt will do the research and contact, and since that firm is already working with local Goshen and other libraries, it might be a viable source. Okey dokey?
Sorry to get it off on the...
Did I approve the treasurer's report?
Yes, we did.
Oh, good. Okay, director's report.
Good evening, good evening. I didn't get the vote on the treasurer's report.
It was Tiffany, wasn't it?
No, I don't think we voted on what...
No, that was the man.
All right, so do you have a motion to accept, I guess we got distracted. Do you have a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Anyone? Anyone?
Norma and Frank.
Norma and Frank. All in favor? All opposed? Director's report?
Director's report. Um, well, we're working on the annual report for the state, haven't gotten too far, it's due in two weeks, so there's a lot of work ahead for Jack and myself, but all of these days out, in the course of...
Well, you'll just have to walk here. You'll get done. Do you like a plow in front of your house? I'll give you a shovel.
This is the report, I probably have said this a few times, forgive me if I'm repeating myself, but that includes as part of the, as part of the package, the approach to RCLS with the variance. So, but in years past, we've done less than we have in this year to work on these issues, so I don't think we have any problem getting the variance passed again. We still should be in operation this time next year.
Can I just ask you a question about that? When you say that we operate under a variance...
Right.
Primarily, that's because of not being handicapped accessible?
No, primarily, that's because of the seized space, lighting, building constraints outside of the, outside of the question of, I mean, we've been grandfathered in as far as the ADN.
Okay, that's to do with insufficient space?
And insufficient lighting. Some of these things we've addressed directly, and some of them we are in the midst of to deal with. But we, but that is a separate issue. And the variance request is just for lighting and space. The biggest thing this month was, I attended the directors' association meeting, and again, I've mentioned this in the past, but Finkelstein Spring Valley Library is no longer part of Answer. Tried to explain that here, it doesn't mean they're not part of RCLS, they still are part of, they are contracted with RCLS, so that the interlibrary loan is still funneled through RCLS. That means materials that go in and out of the library are basically handled, the logistics are handled by the RCLS trucks and drivers. It means that they don't share our catalog anymore, the integrated library system catalog, so that, what this means to the patron is that a patron at Finkelstein, or vice versa, a patron in the so-called Answer Library, which is everybody but Finkelstein, don't share a catalog by which to place holds on items. They have to do it through a person, librarian, through another catalog that sticks on top of the RCLS catalog, which is called CEEL Southeastern Library Association. Which used to be basically for hospital libraries, special libraries, school districts, I mean, public libraries would utilize it, but it was kind of, it was only when you couldn't find what you needed inside RCLS, so the next step out. And now they're gonna get hit, obviously, with a lot more, a lot more work, and it's more intensive, because it means a librarian actually has to intervene, and clerical workers have to intervene as far as bringing the books in. So we haven't seen too much of an impact in Orange County. That's the Rockland County libraries that are gonna take the brunt of that. As far as the finances are concerned, we're, Robert Huber has counseled the library directors to anticipate a ten percent increase in costs. They already have that built in, so we're okay with that line, that should be fine for answer costs. Now, connected to this is the Answer Libraries, those libraries other than Finkelstein, have now decided to also migrate to another ILS. And not the same one that Finkelstein migrated to. They did a lot of, they were actually, amazing amount of research went into it over the year, traveling to different libraries, I was part of it early on, to look at some of the, to look at the system that next door, Mid Hudson, to look at their ILS, and, you know, this, as I say, this is a pretty extensive amount of research went into this, and they decided to go with a product called Symphony, which is actually a sister product to the one we have now, but better. I mean, it has some of the things that, some of the, some of the bells and whistles that are lacking in the Horizon system. It's a little, a little more expensive, but it's not, it's not gonna, it's not gonna blow any budgets. They tried to keep, when they picked up the Horizon system, however many years ago, they were, they, meaning the committee that decided, and then the directors that voted on this, were lambasted for choosing the most inexpensive one, you know, instead of looking, you know, for that, what the actual product boasted versus how much it cost. This time, it turned out again, it was, it happened to be the least expensive, but they, as far as I understand it, they made their decision without looking at the numbers first, without looking at prices, they just looked strictly at what it did, and it just so happened that it also was the best, you know, and then there was the negotiation, negotiations between RCLS, and they got the price down even further, so... We'll see, they're gonna, RCLS is setting up training, a training program, and Symphony people will also be coming directly to member libraries to help with training. And it's supposed to actually be up and running, keep your fingers crossed, but in December of next year. That's sort of big news in RCLS land, and in a lot of member libraries. Migrations can often be pretty intense, hopefully, hopefully they'll, you know, this won't be as bad as the last. I wasn't here for it, I just heard, you know, war stories from how difficult it was, you know, it's just a big endeavor, but, we'll see. The other big thing that was under discussion was the upcoming advocacy day in Albany, Nyla. New York State Library Association, every year, assembles or organizes libraries throughout the state, librarians throughout the state to come and advocate for their libraries and library systems. This year, you've probably read, just fairly big cuts planned for libraries, but what that generally means is the systems get hit the hardest, but we get hit, you know, it trickles down, because we have to support the systems. Robert Huber is attempting to have four buses this year, which usually, I think, are three, so they're rationing it up. And this is open to anybody, that's the library advocate, trustee, we're gonna, I was talking to Michelle earlier about finding some people from here, I know, I probably will be on the bus, I've never done it in the past, but if one was gonna do it, this is the year to do it. And so if you know any library champions, or if you're free, and it's March 1st, you know, just email me, and I'll give you some more information about it. It should be interesting, yeah, obviously, like anything else, the more organized it is, the more effective it'll be, so the earlier you start organizing, that's, you know, the better a campaign it'll be. And I don't think, you know, it just takes basically having, having the people in place and a few pointed questions, and, you know, someone that doesn't mind speaking in front of legislators and such types. So let me know if you're interested, or know anyone that would be interested, and maybe we can get something going. The other big news is the Friends, I've been attending the Friends meeting, and they're rolling along, moving along, they have, they have a trivia contest planned, which I've mentioned, this is on our website now, just information, I don't want to detail about it, I think you've already heard what it's about, it's basically a trivia contest around Goshen's history, and they've assembled something like seventeen teams. It's actually an event you pay to get into, it's not a free thing, it's gonna be over at the harness at the racing museum, and there's gonna be food and door prizes, and it should be a fun evening. I think the teams are almost all set, I'm not popular about that, I'm not really the main contact, so, but if you, if anyone has any inquiries, I can get you to the right person.
Could I just add one thing?
Sure.
The food has been upgraded to actually a dinner.
Okay, so no longer just finger food.
And that's been donated, too. Yes, it's all donated.
We should go as a team.
Desertism donated also, it should be, the twenty-five dollars a piece, but you're gonna get a lot for your twenty-five dollars.
It should be, it should, it sounds like it's really coming together, huh?
I think the team from the village, board, the town board.
Is it really?
You know, the Lion.
The Lion, I do, yeah. BPW.
Yeah, BPW, that's right.
Chamber, the restoration. I'm reading here, I'm not, 'cause I don't know.
There will be some competition.
So those are just, those are fixed teams?
Possibly part of the Lion.
The twenty-five dollars is just to...
Eighteen years, not long enough to know everything, but I have to pull up.
This'll be a twelve-year, and you'll come.
Don't forget it, that I gotta...
I'm still learning the angel's strings.
I just also, just, I just wanted to mention Ken Tashan wanted to come tonight, he's next door, rehearsing for Paul Robeson, which I also wanted to say, he has provided us with a, this is on the website as well, it's just his flyer for the Robeson, and he says it's going along nicely, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. I don't know how many of you here in this room have seen some of his productions, but I've always been impressed, he's pretty good, so it'll be good. And he has also been basically heading up that subcommittee with Yvonne Miro, some of the friends, I've tried to attend, I have the time, a local history guru, Anne Roches will be part of it, too, just coming up with, coming up with questions and...
You heard the question? You heard the questions already.
Yeah, let's see. Another big news, we, actually today was the second time I went to the Healy Building. The first time around, I went with the department heads, Michelle and Eleanor. We got the grand tour with, what's his name, Steve?
Paul Hines.
Paul, no, the owner.
Paul.
Who gave us a great, great, I mean, he knows that place inside out and history and everything. It's kind of entertaining. The building is, you know, obviously lovely. Yes, a good place, but we'll get to that later. Let's see. Yes, the museum passes. I don't know if you guys remember, we had museum passes a while back and everybody loved them and, of course, we had to snatch them away. The reason being, at the time that we decided to close down that project was because we were getting, not hate mail exactly, but we were having like museums realizing that we were an agency and not a residence. And once they realized that, they were less inclined to give us that residence, residence, you know, it was fairly inexpensive, but to do it as an agency, it's, depending on the museum, it can be prohibitive. Looking back into it again, I personally think it's something that should be done. And I'm not just trying to, you know, slop this off, but on a system level, because I think if a system or two systems approached these museums, you'd have a lot more leverage than just little Goshen saying, can't we have a cheaper, you know, rate? So I'm going to, you know, I'm going to talk to Robert about, you know, the possibility of somehow, because I know there are libraries doing it out there and far be it for me to impugn anybody's ethics, but I have a feeling that they're probably doing it in the way we were doing it and then we kind of backed out of it. But Eleanor's been doing some work to try to at least, at least, you know, get some of the heavy, you know, the bigger ones, affordable, but the ones that were most asked about, rather than we had a huge, we had a, you know, a fairly big number and it was just too expensive to do it the right way. But there may be, I see Frank's things going up, he may have a.
On the RCLS weekly newsletter and on your email.
They're.
They're constantly referring to these, these deals that they have, and I assume that we were giving those out to our, to our desk, that we were giving those out to our users.
You're talking about the plum benefits?
They're not limited to trustees, shouldn't they?
Are you talking about the plum benefits?
Yes.
That get passed around? That's a separate issue, but that's something else, but.
It's the same thing that you're talking, just a different name on it.
Well, it's done in a different way, but these were, these were basically, these were basically not one-use things. They were cards that we had that were, that were, that we would pass out, like you pass out a book, they would circulate. The family would come in and take it out, you know, as you would take out any other material in the library and then bring it back. I think the plum benefits is a slightly different thing, but I'll double check.
You know, it seems that it exists, that we don't have to do anything.
We're getting some shaking heads from the audience, so we'll have to check on it.
It is different. It's a membership versus a one-time.
That's what I was.
Ticket discount, so to speak. So the membership cards that we were circulating were good for a whole year and you can use them as many times over and over again.
Whereas these expire after one.
Right.
But the end result is the same. You're getting a break to go into a museum.
Well, I'll double check and see if there's a way to work.
They tell you about semantics in them.
No. It's a little bit.
And it seems the media RCLS thinks we don't have to spend any money.
True. Is the plum a discount first? The other was this free admission.
Yes.
So one of them's just, what, 20% off or something or 30% off? I don't know.
And it's limited. It's not every day of the year. It's limited, you know, the plum benefits are limited. It's like a coupon that expires, whereas the membership benefit is good for any day throughout the year. You know, you go in with the card and it's free admission for you and your family. So, and it's not just off of one admission, it's off of a family, it's usually a family membership that we did have at one time that would allow a family of four to go into the city and experience, you know, whatever museums, even Natural History, the Met, you know, for, as part of their, you know.
That's a good deal.
It was a very good deal. And that's why a lot of people miss it, just because, you know, it is so expensive to travel into the city and then to have to pay the museum fee on top, you know, that's why it was so popular with our families in Goshen.
I have a raft of complaints for that.
It was a very popular thing.
And I believe that there has to be a way to organize it, you know. I mean, museums, too, everybody's sort of hurting a kid too hard and there's not a way to make it work for everybody, but maybe we just.
We could make it for their museum shops if we just.
What was the cost?
It depended, you know. Some of them were free. Some of them were basically free, you know, what, $25 a year and some of them were, you know, were hundreds. And then the way that they, the way they do it for libraries, they would give out like tickets, basically sell you tickets, you know, and you tear the ticket off and each ticket is $25 or whatever. Whereas this is just, you know, the card worked for everybody every time until someone said, wait a minute, you know, I've seen this person before. Whatever, they figured it out that people were doing this and then they sent letters saying we no longer provide libraries with this service, this is for residents, you know, households only. So we'll have to look into it though. That's about it. The building, I don't think anything fell off the building, but no.
Was it snowed?
That's what I'm saying, surprisingly.
You didn't have any water in your office?
You know, I fixed that day. I went out and knocked the ice down. It was the most enjoyable part of my day.
In the back corner by his office, it was taller than.
Yeah, two of them.
It was taller than David. Terrible.
And there was a bigger one down, down the line.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see the other one.
It was two Davids.
I know, but it's like a sculpture.
I'm glad you, I didn't even see it. I've been walking past it every day and about to pull half the roof down.
It was, it was bad. So I was sort of glad.
Matt, I had a couple of questions more related to Eleanor and Michelle's report, but you could probably answer them.
Hopefully.
Eleanor mentioned David is working on magazines in between. Is that the architect?
No, no. That's David Reference.
Okay. David Reference is working on magazines. Some months ago, you implied that we had a theft problem with magazines. Do we still have that problem or have we found a way to solve that?
I haven't heard of you.
I did suggest that we do what other people do is get involved with those long bars that they attach to the magazines and.
That's something, I've seen that done with newspapers and other libraries, but magazines. Maybe that's something I can look into. I don't, I haven't heard of them, but I wouldn't doubt that things still, you know. I mean, the new ones, if I'm not mistaken, are kept behind the reference desk, so at least there's some oversight. He was weeding through, you know, older volumes in the back. That's.
So we don't know if we still have a theft problem?
We don't know. Yeah. If we ever, if we ever, obviously, you know, had, I mean, it's interesting, this is the first library I've worked in and I've worked in quite a number of them. I'm all different styles and I've never seen a library. When I came here, I was shocked to see a library without a, without a, I shouldn't say this here, the whole Goshen, without a security system in place, you know, without a.
Come on, you know.
But as of tomorrow, we. An armed guard.
Thazers.
Thazers and dogs, you know. But that's something that we definitely, really, definitely, I mean, I, a while back, Eleanor had looked into, I'll just, you know, these things sometimes just fall by the wayside, but we were looking into getting a grant to have that put in. It's not something, we have the roof, it's not, it doesn't take up a lot of room. It would take a lot to retrofit all the collections, but going forward, you know, it's not so, the books come, you can get some actually, you know, with the censors coming. But, you know, it doesn't, it's just, you know, you'll see them, you know, like a CBS thing. But that's definitely something we should look into.
Maybe we should start, in anticipation of that, having the books that we order from this point on have it in so that.
So that we don't have to write.
In a year or two, half the collection will be.
It won't be as much.
A collection.
Yeah, the schools have that, so I don't know if you want to call it the new.
It's symptomatic, I think.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we'll look into that. But Frank is right, you know, I don't, you know, short of someone going to the, saying, what happened to the newest men's health? They just know where to be found. We don't know, you know.
Do they have options?
Like that thing, we'll just scan everybody. Just know their skeletons.
Well, there's different technologies too, like the RFID.
RFID is, that's the expensive one. That's, I mean, and it does some great things.
But, yeah, you afford you different.
Right, right.
Can I start with this, can you self-check?
Yeah.
Now, we should see what that costs because maybe, again, if we're going to go in the direction of trying to not have staff tied up with some of these things and, you know, possibly in a larger space, using the same staff, not increasing our staff, maybe we should see what that costs and start to get the books ready for that. We'll look into it.
Eleanor also stated that DVDs or tapes are dropping, audio books usage is dropping.
That's probably partly because she's been aggressively weeding it as well. I mean, but it's also just the nature of, you know, the technology, more, as more people get used to. I mean, for a while, when I was at the reference desk, last, two, a couple of years ago, I can remember people that were vehemently opposed to getting books on CD out because the technology at the time wouldn't allow them when they shut their car off and started, again, it would start from the beginning and they couldn't figure out how to, now that's been addressed and I think a lot of the companies now are, they have smarter CDs. But, yeah, I know that VHS and the cassettes are definitely, the circulation's partially probably going down due to the fact that they're weeding it out.
And nobody has the players.
Right. And cars will come with.
Do you, are we still buying new ones to replace them or?
The cassette?
Yes, so.
No.
You're not? And tapes?
If they're classics, we'll get them on CD. Or MP3. Which is a new way.
So generally, it's all digital format, no tapes.
So we're not buying tapes or?
No.
Good.
I think that's it.
One last, and we've spoken about this, I think at two of the meetings. Last spring, Michelle and Eleanor both were talking about the increase of demands on our services because of the Goshen's library closures in the school district and the two school builds, two school buildings.
Right.
Do we still have evidence of that increase in demand of services or has that tapered off and disappeared? And secondly, as the second part of that question, we were being swamped with research questions from the high school and from college kids, or is that still happening? Two questions, yeah.
I mean, I tried to get out of the reference desk, you know, a few times, and it, from my perspective, but again, these things are cyclical. I mean, I would say it's about as steady as it always was. I didn't see any market increase, but that, you know, some of that has to do with, you know, when the teachers, I mean, there's a certain rhythm to the, you know, to the school year and so at times it will, it'll.
Mid term, spinal stuff.
But I don't know, maybe, Michelle, I can't say that I saw it directly and I haven't heard Eleanor in the last few, you know, where are we now in the year? In the last few months, mention it, but it may be something, right, that comes around when the test time comes. I don't know if you can.
Well, I haven't been up on the rest of the adult reference desk, but down here, we, like Matt says, typically cyclically, you know, this year it's February, so we have African-American History Month and so six, seven, and eight even from St. John's now are coming to us. They need a biography and they need a work of fiction by an African-American author. So we kind of have that prepped. We know February's coming, we get out our bibliography's and we're ready to go. So we do have, you know, quite a bit of increase from that. We still are getting predominantly from the intermediate school, parents who are coming in during the day for books for their children, for book reports that their teachers are assigning. Usually it's on a specific genre, sometimes they'll do historical fiction, biography, realistic fiction, that their kids just aren't picking the right books out of their school library that are meeting the teacher's needs. And I'm not, I have tried to contact the principal there. I know they usually do a literacy week coming up in the spring, that our staff usually goes up and participates in and goes and reads to certain classrooms and things. The PTO president for the intermediate school was in asking for my help as far as developing a theme because they didn't have a librarian up there to help them this year. So we kind of touched base with her about that, but so far I haven't had any direct contact with the principal and/or any of the teachers. So I don't know what their library schedule is like in that, in three, four, and five. In the Scottstown schools, K1 and 2, they have regular library classes and actually Sally Sapolsky, who's up on our circulation desk, is the aide in the room who is doing a valiant job, keeping library classes running for those three grades. We were just up there in January doing our library cards for the first graders. That's typically when the first graders get their card is in January. And we do, we all go up there, Kitty and myself, and we talk to the kids, we read them a story, we show them all the different things that they can check out at the library, what they can take advantage of by getting a library card. It's great to hear some of their answers when you ask how, you know, how much you think this is going to cost you, you know? They love answering that question. It's great. So, but they are all extremely excited about it and so we get the cards rolling. So we've had an influx of first graders coming in too because they're coming in to use their cards for the first time, which is really fun. So like Matt said, it is cyclic, but we, I have noticed, especially in that three, four and five, maybe not the kids, but the parents are definitely coming for help to get the right book that their child needs for their assignment. So it's still, I still see it, you know. Is it overwhelming? You know, I wouldn't say it's overwhelming, but it is definitely, you know, present. Does that answer your question?
Those kinds of, almost like a, almost non-event, closing down the libraries over there.
Not according to the PTOs. I have had PTO, parents come in and say that they want their PTO to do a fundraiser to fund a librarian salary. So they are not happy. At least the ones that I've talked to are not particularly happy with what, you know, what their kids are dealing with. Like I said, the people who are there, they're making a valiant effort to do what they can to, so that the kids don't suffer. I mean, you don't want the kids to suffer, that's, you know, that's the end of the line. That's why we do what we do. But, you know, at the same time, they do see the impact that it's having, so.
Good.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay. Okay. I'm finished. This is budget subcommittee finding.
Thank you, Matt.
Who's going to report for the budget subcommittee?
Maybe with that.
Burning.
Right. What are you going to say?
What are we reporting, what are we reporting about?
Whatever you guys met.
Well, um, yeah, what do we?
I'm going to come up with a thing, but the two percent, let everybody else know. I don't know what you found out and talked in a minute.
Yeah, we, basically, the first, the first thing, I went in and inquired of what any, if we were to discuss, if we were to go with any increase at all, how it would impact the voters. And it's unfortunately a difficult formula that they use. Anybody who lives in Goshen knew that their, their amounts per thousand assessed went down by a penny last year, if anybody caught that or not. And that is, everything's staying the same or near the same, so. Basically, I went in thinking that a, an increase of, let's say, if there are 7,000 homes and an increase of $21,000 would be $3 per household per year. He said, no, it's not really the case. He gave last year as an example and that you really can never talk about that, you can only talk about total tax levied, which is an interesting notion, just considering our budget of, was it $1.2 million to, we were talking about either raising it 20,000 or possibly even 40,000 at a time. It's, you can talk about it in percentages, but really it's a very small amount. And even if you wanted to try to buy it up among houses like that, are people going to cry about $2 per year? Some will, because it's an increase in tax at all. And it led to other, more interesting discussions about the school budget, but we wanted to discuss those here in terms of states. but we wanted to discuss those here in terms of states, state funding being cut and the two percent increase in general, you know, the governor, I guess, is pushing for a 2% cap on tax levy increase, starting with the 2012 year. It's not a law that's been passed yet, but they're working on it and we're watching to see how that plays out and whether it's going to affect us and particularly whether it's going to affect any plans for a library move and purchasing another facility or... It doesn't seem like it will because there's always, the reports about these law, this proposed law also includes sole subverbiage about capitalist vendors being excluded to some degree. And we're still waiting to see where or when it passes, what it actually reads, so.
An, an interesting point is that I, I think everyone should be aware of it, that this 2% cap has been in the press for months now, ever since Cuomo decided to run for governor. But, um, up until the last two or three weeks, the, the talk of a 2% tax cap was limited to school districts in the press. And now it is, now the press is reporting it as a 2% cap on state and local gov, oh, school district and local government taxing, which I think is a very important point that... I, I don't know what they're looking at, I don't know what they have on pieces of paper if they're in Albany and just, could, I just, I was shocked. When Bernie first brought this up, I said, yo, go away, it's, they're talking about school districts, we may be a school district, the library, but we're not a school district and we, we probably won't be covered by a 2% cap. But now, suddenly, from nowhere, the 2% cap seems to be applied to every level of government taxation. Just, I'm asking people to keep that in mind. I'm not saying it is and I'm not saying it's going to affect a, by a district and a village and a, and a town, but it seems to me that what I'm picking up now in the press, it, it will, if it is so enacted.
And that would include if a school bonded to build another high school, it would include that yearly amount for the...
It's going to happen in Albany. First off, you'd have to get, probably what's going to happen is you can supersede the 2% if you get a sixty, 60% vote, a 60-40 vote, so...
What is?
What happens to the, if you, certainly if you have a vote for a...
Well, we, we have, I would have to discuss the operating budget for the coming year, which really has nothing directly to do with the 2% cap discussion at the state level. So, which could go in any direction, we have no idea how it's going to end up. But for the, for us, for the immediate future, we, we were asked, we asked staff to come up with two proposals. One is a 0% increase, go with the same amount as the current year, next year. And the other is a 2% increase. And, um, I don't know how you want to proceed with this.
Well, in front of you is the zero and the two, I just want to make sure, are the line items as they would be? You have delegated the money where you think it needs to go to suffice for the year? Okay, you talked to the, we had mentioned that last time in talking to the department as in getting the money where it needed to be. So these numbers represent that. So, in front of you, I don't know if people need more time, since you just got a ceasing or not, we, we saw the 0% last time, now there's a 2% for your consideration in front of you as well. I'm willing to vote tonight on the budget, I just don't know if anyone else needs more time.
Well, we, we need to make a decision tonight, don't we, to get this...
Well, it's either now or work session, you know, within the week, if people want to prove it for three or four days, but yeah, within 40 some days, that's in the paper. And our next meeting is a month, so there's no time to down...
Would you like a motion?
To accept or, you're putting a presentation of, of what your budget choices is?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, can we ask for a 1% also, zero, one, and two?
No, the committee is...
Two? Oh, okay.
Just the committee is...
Okay.
Um, I, I recommend that we have a 0% increase in our budget for next year. Going for the same, $1,151,769. I need a second to discuss it.
We've got a motion, we've only got discussion.
Do you want to discuss?
Well, in case anyone has...
We have to have a discussion, so you can figure out to discuss it, before you can discuss it, you have to have a second. If no one's going to second it, we won't even discuss it.
So Eleanor's going to second the discussion on the, on the putting the 0% budget. Okay, so right now on the table, the motion is to, Jim wants to have a, us to accept the 0% budget. That would be our vote. If there needs more discussion on the 2%, the table is now open for that. If not, I'm going to make a motion to accept the 0% increase.
Do we need to discuss it?
I mean, to approve it, I mean, in favor or not, all that, a call for a vote on the 0%.
Yes, Frank wants the 0%.
Okay.
I'm, I'm well in, in the, in the 0% increase. I would like to see a, a line item in the new budget, if we could squeeze out some amount and off the top of my head, it's a $10,000 number that I think should be allocated to this board. And I think this board should have a small amount of funds that we can go and pay honorar, honorar, honorarium to people to come in and talk to us and share their expertise with us. This committee met this afternoon, we, we talked, we had an accountant who was willing to give us some time. And I, they, they get to a point when you're looking and trying to get people's expertise, sometimes the price you get paid, your, the value that you get for the expertise you ask for is directly related to the price that you paid for it. And there's enough free advice going around that you sometimes wonder what you're really getting. I just feel that we need some amount of money. We talked earlier this year about determining a value for these properties, the two properties that we own. We had to determine the value of a property that we were considering buying. You know, a lump sum of money like that to be dedicated for board purposes. And I think we need that in our budget.
Well, how is that different from professional, well, the better question is, yeah, what's, what is the professional services that's allotted on here? What is that expected to cover? I mean, is it...
We go by, from a lawyer, or we have someone come in that we need, like an architect or a construction or something, that's a line that would come out of.
So that, that's the category you're talking about? The question would be, is there, are there sufficient funds in that line to bring in some other people than we normally would bring in?
Now, on the zero increase budget, you've cut that by $16,000.
Well, what I'm trying to do here is, the fiscal year for 2011 is the one we're in right now?
Yes.
Okay, that's showing 18...
Eighteen, eight, eighty-five.
And that's the same as for the proposed budget.
Right, and the zero increase budget, I'm sorry, you write last year, it was thirty-four, eighty-five.
But we made the significant cut, I think, two years ago because I guess the lawyer, not the lawyer, the architect.
Right, we weren't paying that much.
That was part of it, the other thing was, is that we moved Tershen, Ken, what's his name? He was down in that.
He's in community development.
He's under, yeah, program community development.
So how are we doing in that line right now?
Community development, 18, six.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I mean, in the current system here, how much are we spending?
It's a little bit over budget, 3,000 over. But he had a lot of his programs stacked early in the year. And we've got another audit to pay for? Can you mean, yeah?
Professional services.
Oh, okay, um, we're a little bit under budget, 451 under budget. Did we pay for this last audit?
The one that we just got?
Yeah, that's all paid, yeah, that one's done.
We don't overhave any money.
No, we don't overhave any money.
Do we have any large expected professional services budget that has come in?
No, none that I'm aware of.
Four, maybe, four, maybe, whatever the next audit is going to be.
It also includes the appraisal, appraisers in there already.
Okay.
There's a little wiggle room in there, but not, not a lot.
We'll still have to pay for the architect and paint, fall, and we'll, and then we will have to pay for whatever audit, whoever we decide to pay, whoever we decide to pay.
Right, right.
What is the new building's expenses? Under other expenses?
The question of the loan.
Is it?
About, about three billion, twenty-nine hundred, something.
Twenty-nine, fifteen?
No, that's the loan, the amortization of the loan. No, no, the loan is on the bottom, under interest, under debt. The new building was just, I think, last year, we, the board decided to put money in in case there had to be anything done on the land itself, like maintenance.
Oh, okay, oh, gotcha, okay.
Right.
And you remove, and that's right, but you broke it up over 12 months, but we only paid for that kind of stuff under warmer weather.
Right, it was just split evenly, right, but we haven't really, I don't think anything has hit that yet this year, so.
No.
Right, so we're doing well on it.
No, over there, it's really good.
Right.
We're not plowing the field.
So I'm, I'm not understanding what you're saying there, Frank. You're saying to possibly increase that professional services fees amount by $10,000?
Mm-hmm.
To increase our budget by about 1%?
No, I'm not talking about increasing the budget.
You're talking about taking funds away from other line items?
Right.
Like what line items?
I didn't pick a particular one, I was saying...
Why wouldn't that be covered, I'm sorry, why wouldn't that be covered already under professional services and...
This is so relatively little with, you mean...
Yeah, why wouldn't that already, why couldn't we already use money from that? Or that is special services.
And we're already using that?
But my, my thinking is we're staying at a 0% increase, it's almost like an austerity budget at a time when our patrons are probably, would appreciate additional resources in some areas.
Like a new building?
No, no. And, and at times of austerity, I don't think a new building, unless there was some compelling reason, is what one would pursue.
Well, the, the, the thing that we're not paying attention to, that I think is the most important, is if you look at our current budget, right now, the total expenses after seven months, we're $103,000 under budget. We're going to end the year with over $100,000. So to find $10,000 to put into that line, I don't think it should be that difficult. The budget has some wiggle room and I don't, I'm very comfortable with the 0%. I think even with the 0%, next year, we may end up with $60,000, $70,000. Now, we do need a cushion, it could be an emergency, we have, in the summer, we have no money, we have to borrow to cover the July, August, September because we don't get our money from the school district right away and so on. But there is enough of a cushion in, in these lines to, to get $10,000. And the purpose that Frank is talking about is to bring in some people to help us be more efficient and to help us to do what you just said, to provide more services to people who are hurting. And I think, I'm not criticizing the staff, I think we have an excellent staff, but people that have other libraries and do things in a different way may be able to give us a, a good idea now and then. So I think it's a very useful way to spend money and I think we can squeeze it, squeeze it out. So I would support doing that. Now, we, we're going to have to find, if we decide to do that, we need to find the categories to pull it out of right now because we're going to vote tonight, if possible.
Well, we're getting, so basically what we're saying is, we're, we're destined to have $100,000 over budget, which normally we use during July, September. And we would have to use some of that dollars and just borrow more against it, which we've already discussed in previous meetings, not at all.
And the amount of income that we, we pay for that borrowing, I think is less $100.
For short-term...
Extremely low rate for extremely short amount of time, so.
From, from a business standpoint, though, we, and I know, and we, we've discussed this in committee, actually, that we need to get a better idea as to where this surplus is coming from and whether we want to maintain it as, if we can or not. And more importantly, on a, from a business standpoint, it's, Frank's, Frank's correct in that it's critical to have money allotted properly. We want to know that we, you know, this $18,000 professional services, if we know that we're going to increase this by $10,000, by rights, we should be increasing that line out of by 20, by, by 10. Now, if we know that we may have those and may not and we want to ride it out like that and want to move money from one line item to another during the year, that is essentially our prerogative. But it's just with the understanding that we're taking away from the surplus, we're going to be borrowing a little more at nominal cost later on. And then when you read this, this next year, we should consider increasing line items depending on whether it's going to be a recurring charge.
Yeah, we, we usually have done that in the past, based on utilities and parents and what is necessary.
In this case, we, we know that we're talking about bringing on other professional services and I'm not sure what the remaining, what's, what's the difference on that? $8,000 or $10,000 in a professional services currently? We know, we might, likely that we'll use somebody, even Colmay or somebody, we know what his services cost, so in theory, we should be increasing that and maybe decreasing it next year, but as long as we're all in agreement to borrow from the surplus.
Well, tonight, as long as we get a budget, the line item, we don't need to do tonight. As long as we vote on the grand total and the tax levies go to...
So you're saying, we can, we can vote on the total and then we can...
We can move line items.
Change the rate down, is that right?
Yes, yes, that doesn't need to be done tonight.
So maybe next month, um...
As long as we have the total, lines can be benagled. So the, yes.
I just wanted to mention that we typically put our budget out in the newsletter that goes out in the spring just before the vote. So it's generally decided upon to show the public 30 days or 35 days before the vote. We still do have a little more time to develop that, refine it, I should say. But the, the total number is something that we can have.
Do we have a month before the newsletter?
Well, at our next meeting, it's March 14th, squared away on the next meeting. That's 30 days before the vote, that is enough.
She said that the next meeting is enough time to get it in the newsletter.
Okay, so the motion is, is there any discussion, if anyone wants a different budget increase other than the zero that's on the table now? Okay, so the motion is to have a 0% increase, keeping the tax levy the same? All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion, motion carries.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody, thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Citizen Advisory Board Report.
Well, the, the, what I have was, I think, with the, with the, the, the discussion at the subcommittee of a higher increase. And since that impacts the budget, maybe we should talk about that too.
Say that again, please? A hiring freeze, the budget committee had recommended.
Oh, the budget, we're still on that subject?
Sure, before we...
So that would be max, um...
So why?
Boggings, tell us what you see, what you need.
Why hiring, I'm not sure, what I'm telling you.
That's what they recommended.
What, what does that mean?
You have delegated the money where you think it needs to go to suffice for the year.
Yes.
Okay, you talked to the, we had mentioned that last time in talking to the department as in getting the money where it needed to be. So these numbers represent that.
Yep.
So in front of you, I don't know if people need more time since you just got a decision or not. We saw those zero percent last time. Now there's a two percent for your consideration in front of you as well. I'm willing to vote tonight on the budget. I just don't know if anyone else needs more time.
Well, what we need to make a decision tonight, don't we, to get this?
Well, it's either now or work session, you know, within the week if people want to peruse it for three or four days. But yeah, within three, four days, that's in the paper. And our next meeting is a month, so there's no time.
So would you like a motion?
To accept or you're putting a presentation of what your budget choices?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. Can we ask for a one percent also? Zero, one and two?
No, the committee is.
Two? Okay.
Just the committee.
Okay.
Um, I recommend that we have a zero percent increase in our budget for next year. Going for the same one million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Now you second to discuss.
We've got a motion, don't we, that discussion?
Do you want to discuss? Well, in case anyone has.
We have to have a discussion, so if you're going to discuss it, before you can discuss it, you have to have a second. If no one's going to second it, we won't even discuss it.
So someone's going to start a discussion on the putting the zero percent budget. Okay, so right now on the table, the motion is to, Jim wants to have us to accept the zero percent budget. That would be our vote. If there needs more discussion on the two percent, the table is now open for that. If not, I'm going to make a motion to accept the zero percent increase.
Do we need discussion?
I mean to approve it, I mean in favor or not.
We're a call for a vote.
A call for a vote on the zero.
Yes, Frank wanted to say something.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm well in the, in the zero percent increase. I would like to see a, a line item in the new budget. If we could squeeze out some amount, then off the top of my head, it's a ten thousand dollar number that I think should be allocated to this board. And I think this board should have a small amount of funds that we can go and pay honorarum, honorarium to people to come in and talk to us and share their expertise with us. The committee met this afternoon, we, uh, we talked, uh, we had an accountant who was willing to give us some time. And I, they get to a point when you're looking and trying to get people's expertise, sometimes the price you get paid, the value that you get for the expertise you ask for is directly related to the price that you paid for it. And there's enough free advice going around that you sometimes wonder what you're really getting. I just feel that we need some amount of money. We talked earlier this year about determining a value for these properties, the two properties that we own. We had to determine the value of a property that we were considering buying. You know, a lump sum of money like that to be dedicated for board purposes. And I think we need that in our budget.
Well, how is that different from professional? Well, the better question is, yeah, what is the professional services that's allotted on here? What is that expected to cover? I mean, is it entirely focused?
Or we have someone come in that we need, like an architect or a construction or something like that. Either line item would come out of.
So that's the category you're talking about. The question would be, is there, are there sufficient funds in that line to bring in some other people than we normally would bring in?
Right. Now, on the zero increase budget, you've cut that by fifteen thousand dollars.
Um, well, what I'm trying to do here is, the fiscal year for 2011 is the one we're in right now?
Yeah.
Okay. That's showing eighteen.
Eighteen, eight eighty-five.
And that's the same as for the proposed budget.
Right, and the zero increase budget, I'm sorry, you're right, last year it was thirty-four, eighty-five.
But you made the significant cut two years ago because I guess the lawyer that, not the, the architect.
Right, we weren't paying.
There's some money.
That was part of it. The other thing was is that we moved Tershen, Ken, what's his name? He was down in that.
Where did we put Ken?
He's in community development.
He's under, yeah, program community development.
So how are we doing in that line right now?
Community development?
Yeah.
Eighteen, six.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I mean, in contrast to me here, how much are we spending?
It's a little bit over budget, three thousand over. But he had a lot of his programs stacked early in the year.
And we've got another audit to pay for.
Ken, you mean?
No, we're professional services.
Oh, okay. We're a little bit under budget, four fifty-one under budget.
Did we pay for this last audit?
The one that we just got?
The one that we got.
Yeah, that's all paid, yeah, that one's done.
We don't owe them any money.
No, we don't owe them any money.
Do we have any large expected professional services budget that has to come in?
No, none that I'm aware of.
Formations. Whatever, an extortion, whatever, an extortion.
It also includes the appraisal, appraisers in there already.
Okay.
There's a little wiggle room in there, but not a lot.
We will still have to pay for the architect and paying form and everything like that. And then we will have to pay for whatever audit, whoever we decide to pay, whoever we decide to pay.
Right, right.
That's not the problem.
There's not enough.
What is the new building's expenses? Under other expenses?
The question of the loan.
Is it? About three thousand, twenty-nine hundred, something.
Twenty-nine, fifteen?
No, that's the loan, the amortization of the loan.
No, no, the loan is on the bottom, under interest. The new building was just, I think, last year, the board decided to put money in in case there had to be anything done on the land itself, like maintenance.
Oh, okay. We had to have it mowed and we have to.
Right.
Thank you for the removal, and that's right. But you broke it up over twelve months, but we only paid for that kind of stuff under warmer weather.
Right, it was just split evenly, right. But we haven't really, I don't think anything has hit that yet this year, so.
No.
Right.
We don't have to remove the smell over there, it's all good.
Right.
About plowing the field.
So I'm not understanding what you're saying there, Frank. You're saying to possibly increase that professional services fees amount by ten thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
To increase our budget by about one percent?
No, I'm not talking about increasing the budget.
You're talking about taking funds away from other line items?
Right.
Like what line items?
I didn't pick a particular one, I was saying.
Why wouldn't that be covered, I'm sorry. Why wouldn't that be covered already under professional services and?
This is so relatively little, we're, you mean?
Yeah, why wouldn't that already, why couldn't we already use money from that? But that is special services.
And we already used in that.
But my thinking is we're staying at a zero percent increase, it's almost like an austerity budget. At a time when our patrons are probably, would appreciate additional resources in some areas.
Like a new building?
No, no. And at times of austerity, I don't think a new building, unless there was some compelling reason, is what one would pursue.
Well, the, the, the thing that we're not paying attention to that I think is the most important is, if you look at our current budget, right now, the total expenses after seven months, we're a hundred and three thousand dollars under budget. We're going to end the year with over a hundred thousand dollars. So to find ten thousand dollars to put into that line, I don't think it should be that difficult. The budget has some wiggle room. And I don't, I'm very comfortable with the zero percent. I think even with the zero percent, next year, we may end up with sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Now, we do need a cushion. It could be an emergency, we have, in the summer, we have no money, we have to borrow to cover the July, August, September because we don't get our money from the school district right away and so on. But there is enough of a cushion in, in these lines to, to get ten thousand dollars. And the purpose that Frank is talking about is to bring in some people to help us be more efficient and to help us to do what you just said, to provide more services to people who are hurting. And I think, I'm not criticizing the staff, I think we have an excellent staff, but people that have other libraries and do things in a different way may be able to give us a, a good idea now and then. So I think it's a very useful way to spend money. And I think we can squeeze it, squeeze it out. So I would support doing that. Now, we're going to have to find, if we decide to do that, we need to find the categories to pull it out of right now because we're going to vote tonight, if possible.
Well, we're going, so basically what we're saying is, we're definitely going to have a hundred thousand dollars over budget, which normally we use during July, September. And we would have to use some of that dollars and just borrow more into it, which we've already discussed in previous meetings.
Right. And the amount of interest that we pay for that borrowing, I think is less than a hundred dollars.
For short term.
Extremely low rate for extremely short amount of time, so.
From, from a business standpoint, though, we, and I know, and we've discussed this in committee, actually, that we need to get a better idea as to where this surplus is coming from and whether we want to maintain it as the use of it against the can or not. And more importantly, on a, from a business standpoint, it's, Frank's, Frank's correct in that it's critical to have money allotted properly. We want to know that we, you know, this eighteen thousand dollars for professional services, if we know that we're going to increase this by ten thousand dollars, by rights, we should be increasing that line item by twenty, by ten. Now, if we know that we may have those and may not, and we want to ride it out like that and we want to move money from one line item to another during the year, that is essentially our prerogative. But it's just with the understanding that we're taking away from the surplus, we're going to be borrowing a little more at non-mo cost later on. And then when you read this, this next year, we should consider increasing that line item depending on whether it's going to be a recurring charge.
Yeah, we usually have done that in the past, based on utilities and parents and whatever they say.
In this case, we, we know that we're talking about bringing on other professional services. And I'm not sure what the remaining, what's the difference on that? Eight thousand or ten thousand dollars in a professional services currently? We know we might, likely that we'll use somebody, even Colmay or somebody. We know what his services costs, so in theory, we should be increasing that and maybe decreasing it next year. But as long as we're all in agreement to borrow from the surplus.
Well, tonight, as long as we get a budget, the line item, we don't need to do tonight. As long as we vote on the grand total and the tax levies go to.
You're saying we can, we can vote on the total and then we can change the breakdown, is that right?
Yes, yes. That doesn't need to be done tonight.
So maybe next month?
As long as we have the total, lines can be been egged. So the, yes.
I just wanted to mention that we typically put our budget out in the newsletter that goes out in the spring just before the vote. So it's generally decided upon to show the public thirty days or thirty-five days before the vote. We still do have a little more time to develop that, refine it, I should say. But the, the total number is something that we have.
Do we have a month before the newsletter?
Well, at our next meeting, it's March fourteen. Square away on our next meeting, it's about enough time down.
That's thirty days before the vote, that's enough?
She said that the next meeting is enough time to get it in the newsletter.
Okay, so the motion is, is there any discussion? If anyone wants a different budget increase other than the zero that's on the table now? Okay, so the motion is to have a zero percent increase, keeping the tax levy the same? All in favor? All opposed? Motion? New York State, one of the motions carries. Turn your attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Citizen Advisory Board Report.
One of the things I had was, like I say, with the, with the committee, but there was a discussion as a subcommittee of a hiring freeze. And since that impacts the budget, maybe we should probably move that to.
Say it again, please. A hiring freeze, the Budget Committee had recommended.
Oh, the budget, we're still on that subject.
Yeah.
That would be max.
So why?
Boggins.
Why?
Tell us what you see, do you need?
Why a hiring freeze? I'm not sure what I'm talking about.
That's what they recommended.
What does that mean?
Well, I guess there's. Do we have openings? One outstanding or one open position currently?
Well, what I had asked, what I hoped for was a, about eleven thousand dollars for a part-time.
Remember we talked about this?
For the off-believered circulation staff, but.
Look at that word.
I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, it's, it's always difficult or anything, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want to say it's not, it's not, it's not a, you know, it can be burdensome on the people that are trying their best to keep up. And it's hard to take a day off because you can't find anybody to cover it. You know, I'm, I'm, and I don't want to sound like a whiner either. I'm in a very different position than staff members, you know, in certain ways. I mean, I'm sort of, I mean, this is my home, or, you know, this is, you know what I mean, like at the time. But I just, so I have a different take on, you know, but other people, they have days they want to take off and they need to be able to. And we were hoping to have a little bit of wiggle room there, but, you know, we, 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 that was part of the way we were able to, to establish the zero percent was by cutting that, that, I mean, you know. And as I say, it's not, I don't think, I hope, I don't think it's going to mean anyone's going to, you know, going to quit. But I, you know, I do see places where this could be a little, you know, backup, safety net.
I would say that the Citizens, or the Advisory Committee. You, whatever the name was.
The Budget Subcommittee.
You want to put a hiring freeze? Why? And what is the reason behind that? Do you think times are going to get rough? Certainly there was a reason, you discussed it, I would like to know the reason.
I think the feeling that we had was that, if you look at the school district and other entities, but the school district is the best example. They're going to be laying off an incredible number of people. We just think that everyone has to kind of do their, their part. And I don't have the feeling, based upon my actual observations, that a hiring freeze is going to cause a, a major, major problem here in the library. I think it's the kind of thing where if there is a major issue down the road, Matt could come back to us and say, look, we have a hiring freeze, but I'd like to have permission to do such and such because we have a situation. But I just think that the message that we should be sending to the community is, you know, they live in the public tax bill, we're a small part of the, we're, we're doing our part. We're doing the best we can. The employees here have a salary scale, they have, was it two percent increase? So I think we, we gave them addition to the steps that they have. They have security, they have, you know, pension benefits, medical benefits. I just think we should do some reasonable belt tightening. And I think having a hiring freeze for the foreseeable future is, is a reasonable step, so.
Doesn't, doesn't a zero percent increase in the budget show that we're doing our part? And isn't it that if they do lay off, as they got rid of librarians last year, wouldn't our services be required more so?
And not just that.
No?
The one part timer you're out before doesn't get benefits or pension or.
Why in spring?
For that one, one individual, I don't see a problem with it. I see your point, so. But if we're already at optimum staff and we lose somebody, do we not replace them? Is that what you're suggesting?
I, I would like to not just automatically replace someone, which is what you, currently, right now, with the line, if someone leaves, Matt has the authority to replace the staff, to replace the person the next day. We, I would like to look at that very carefully when that time comes. And the way to do that is to have a freeze and then have, and come to us on a case-by-case basis, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to mention that we've been very, you know, I mean, without comparing us to, I mean, what else, or? We actually run this place pretty economically, I think. Adrian and Michelle sitting here, here's an example of a position that used to be full-time, thirty-five hours. She does her job in twenty-four hours, what used to be done in thirty-five, approximately. Likewise.
Definitely under.
Where we used to have a librarian at the circulation, head of circulation, librarians don't come cheap. We now have clerks in that position. Because I didn't feel like a librarian necessarily would want to stay in that position because they go to school to basically be, you know, working reference and working, working with materials. And then suddenly they're just sitting back there, they yell there for ten cent fines, and we say, forget this. Likewise with the, the assistant director is a, is full-time, part-time, it's a part-time hour. So I, I'm not necessarily contending with what you're saying, I'm just saying, just, just, just for the record, you know, it's, you know, there's, there's ways we have tried to kind of trim and, and make things lean and still get what we need to get done, done. And I know, you know, for a fact that that means often there are people who miss very little that, that work at home, you know, and that, that never think to bill, bill us for, you know, you know, that are worse for their, I mean, the testament to their, to their dedication. So that's all, I just, I just, so it's just for the record, you know, that's partly the reason we can do what we do is because we have very loyal and very hardworking, you know, people doing it. But I just don't want to, I don't want to, it's a good phrase for this right now, it moves me, I don't want to take advantage of their, it's a better phrase, but take advantage of their.
What's the word?
Thank you. What's the word? You know, their devotion.
What, I'm sorry. Why, why can't we, instead of, you know, not having a hiring freeze, because I don't, I don't think we want to tie Matt's hands. I mean, suppose somebody came down with an illness that they needed to be out and that person needed to be, they needed someone to fill that position. And I think we should leave it at Matt's discretion and then come back and say.
Well, Matt has a number of part-time people whose hours he could increase currently, right?
Sure.
So he, in other words, he thought that he doesn't have lots of people. How many people do we have altogether, full-time, part-time?
Well, full-time, there'd be three, less than. Seven or eight and a whole slew of part-timers.
So he can always use the, the part-time.
Some of them are very.
The last number is we're thirty-four employees with eight full-timers, with the last number.
You're talking about some of those people are, are eight hours, you know, pay period every two weeks.
I'm sorry, you what?
Many of those people are very part-time. They're almost, I would call them substitutes. I mean, they're just on the verge of being substitutes. But because of the way civil service works, they have to be considered part-time. Otherwise, the civil service will be breathing down your neck pretty quick if they see you getting regular hours over a stretch of time. So sometimes what we call part-time isn't what you might think of when you say part-time. Somebody that's pulled in very occasionally or may have, you know, just a few hours a week. The core, I would say, would probably be, you know, six or seven full-time people. And then maybe another, and this is off the top of my head, but another ten, you know, part-timers that are more regularly scheduled for nineteen hours a, a week.
And the old library?
No, they're, that, it, civil service sets it up in such a way that if you have what you call a part-timer, they have to be beneath nineteen hours, whether they're librarians, clerks, or any, it doesn't matter. If you call them a part-timer, they have to be less than nineteen hours. Full-timers are over nineteen hours. Substitutes cannot have a regular schedule. So when you look at that list, you're seeing full-timers, part-timers and a bunch of people that are almost substitutes. They're, they're just there for emergencies or they have maybe, as I say, you know, a few hours a week. But the core would probably be either, you know, fifteen people altogether, I'd say seven full-timers and other.
Right, but if they're hourly employees, they're part-timers.
Right.
And our average. Twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents an hour.
That's about right.
The average non-librarian hourly wage was fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents an hour.
It's about right.
So what we've got to do is find a way to move.
Well, that's what we have done.
We had thirteen thousand hours for hourly employees that were not librarians last year.
I mean, most of Michelle's, most of Michelle's youth services are not librarians, just for that reason. They're down here, they're adults with, you know, with advanced educations that are, that are, that are working at clerical, clerical wage levels. Because you can, couldn't staff a librarian if you're being, you know.
As you know, I brought up the question, and you seem to have come up with a retort to that, that Warwick, which is twice the size of our library in service, people in service, and according to Warwick themselves, twice the size of our library in circulation, has fewer employees.
I think there's confusion. We'll have to revisit this again when we're, you know, when we have more time. But I have a feeling that the confusion is FTE versus full-time people. I think there was, there was, there's some kind of gray area here. When I went back.
The director of the library said, I have twenty-five employees of which eight are full-time. That's what the director of the library said.
That's interesting information, well, I'd love to see.
So what you're, so what you're saying is there, if there's any, any part-time employees that we have that are maybe working two hours a week or less, they don't keep those types of employees, is what it sounds like?
I, I, I don't know, and.
Huh.
I, I'm bringing, I'm bringing up a concern of mine that twice the library does twice the work that we do. And three, three, three hundred thousand circulation items.
But you're also not taking into consideration the fact that they actually have a parking lot, so they can have people parking there. Some of the circulation rates you see, the differences have to do with.
Walls that cannot be easily removed. And in regard to libraries, the big, long-term issues are, number one, getting large space so that you don't have to have lots of staff or have to not have, you know, one person can supervise a very large area, it's what you want.
Right.
And also, it's the utilities and the retrofitting costs of existing building. So it's almost as if, if we were to get your building or any building like that, we don't need the building, we need the land, but not the building.
I completely agree with you.
It makes it very difficult to purchase your property.
I've been involved in construction, ground up and reconstruction and, you know, retrofitting, you know, millions of square feet. I think your dollar per square foot is pretty accurate, although it doesn't include green-friendly, you know, so there's going to be an adjustment there. But I completely agree with you. And just to be totally neutral, what I'd like to see the board do is allow themselves the privilege to think about this in more of a strategic way. And think about open land as a possibility, new construction, there are grants available for green-friendly buildings. There are other opportunities that I'd like you guys to look at. The front of our property is what I'm talking about. The historical society, I thought, would be well housed in the Anthony Dobbin Stagecoach Inn because of its historic significance. So I thought it made perfect sense that way. And the front of it could be all new construction, and that's where you can put up this library that could be exquisite. And if you think about the location, if you just look at Goshen and the foot traffic and traffic, okay? And where are you servicing the most people? Where are the schools? If you look at, if you just did a bullseye of where is the population, where are they coming from? I don't think Healy is your location. Just, I like the building, you know, but I think it's better a grocery store, you know. But it, it seems like you aren't allowing yourselves the privilege to think about this more objectively and say, you know what, if we could do anything, where would we want to be and what's our bullseye? And go out from there, you know.
How is this salacious, because we already own it? And the people are going to have a fit if we move down.
I, I.
Free blocks to your property and not.
I agree with you, and I think that's why you need to do this as a strategy. I don't know what it's going to be like to do the site plan improvements that need to be done. I don't know what it's going to be like to do the site plan improvements that need to be done there. So I don't know what you're going to end up with when you compare it to this property, which is right there by the county building and the village hall, and all the other infrastructural supports that you have. So I just, you know, look at it, use it as your.
We would just want to buy, I think it would be of interest to us would be the land that's on the front.
Right.
You're talking about what?
I agree with you.
Acre and a half?
I agree with you.
How big is the land?
It's not big enough, is it?
No, well, it, it is, it is big enough, it's, it's three acres. Well, you've got six hundred feet going this way, and three hundred feet frontage. Well, do you have the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think if you, once you get, once you cut out the building.
Two thirty-three, I think, two thirty-three across the front.
See, I, I don't see the value in buying another piece of land, or maybe there's a stone's throw from a five-acre lot that we already own. And purchasing your property would include demolishing buildings and doing things that we don't have to do on the five acres that we already have. So when we looked at this the last time, it didn't seem like, it didn't, it seemed like very nice, lovely, but not really what we need. And since this is on one, your property is on one side of the county building, our property is, is on the other side of the county building. There's no real benefit to us to take something we already own, ignore that, and purchase something else almost the same on the other side of the county building, I really don't see the point in it. And in fact, that's the next thing on the, I'm going to just put this to rest, because I thought, you know, we kind of discussed and dismissed, it's lovely, it really is a lovely piece of property, but I really don't see how it's better than what we already own, different from what we already own, and improvement over what we already own. And I'm just not seeing it.
No, I agree.
But that, that show the position of the house on the lot?
I know, it has nothing on it. It's just the, the lot.
I, I think when you subdivide that, that house out.
Right, the house out.
You have to get rid of it. There can't be much more than.
Well, you can't get rid of it.
An acre, acre and a half at most.
It's a historic landmark.
You can't get rid of it.
I mean, it's.
Then making, making.
We already have five acres right here.
They would have to be.
We already own five acres right here, I don't see the value in it. It's lovely, but I don't think it's, it'll work for us.
Well, I think that, you know, see, this is how you have to do it. You have to take a look at what, what is your bullseye? You know, what's, what's your home run? And then go out from there, because I think when you look at the land improvements of your own site, that may or may not change your decision.
I think that what you're ignoring is that we already own five acres in the village with a substantial frontage already, in a park-like setting already. And it wouldn't involve having to deal with the historical building, it wouldn't involve having to deal with all the other things that are inherent in your property, and it's already substantially larger than your property. And I think that we, as a board, have decided already that we didn't, it, it was lovely, but it's really not a vast improvement over what we already own, it doesn't meet our needs, it's not even close. So, thank you.
Okay.
So then, back to the daily property discussion, what are we going to do? We're going to hire a poll mate?
So do we have a motion?
We have a motion hanging out there.
A motion is to.
What was it again?
So you have some base property?
Right.
And hire a poll mate to just be.
And have them do, and now.
Did the motion up to a certain amount of money, or?
I think it's the existing conditions and services, the program services and design services for salishy. So that would be about eleven grand, is that what we said it was going to?
I think that's what you guys.
Yeah, I do think so, too. I just want to make sure everybody's up to the same number, so I think I might.
Yeah, there is a number.
About a, I don't think, do we want to.
It's a motion.
No number attached?
Are we going to want to attach a number to the motion?
Well, isn't it right there?
Yeah.
What he's asking for.
Twenty thousand, twenty-one, forty-eight, and four.
I would say no, no more than eleven thousand in eleven.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not that much.
Not to exceed eleven thousand.
It seems to me that, that our tax pay is, and our library has already paid for this, that we're asking, we're, we're, we may, what we may be really asking for is, is this report in, in two thousand and eleven dollars. But obviously, this thing was done, or at least the bulk of this has been done. And I don't see why we should be able to, why we should have to pay a poll mate or any other architect to do the groundwork, the, the, the ground prep work that was obviously done before, if we can go through the, the records that we've done for the building already. It's, we're taking most of it, a lot of his work away.
The building, I'm, I'm sorry, the building that, the Pauline from Ashland, that twenty million dollars?
That was like a twenty thousand square foot building.
Yeah.
But you, you still got your, your, your ground.